Welcome, everyone, and welcome for those at home viewing. Welcome to our second meeting of November, our Common Council this evening. Madam Clerk, will you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated December 16, 2024, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the Daze and return it thereafter.
Thank you so much. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Present.
Ms. Hamlet?
Present.
Ms. Cammerson?
Here.
Mr. Polowski?
Here.
Ms. Smallwood?
Present.
Ms. Toad?
Here.
President McTiernan.
Present. All right, I understand there's someone who's celebrating a very special day today in our audience. Mr. Azarovsky has a birthday.
Happy Birthday!
And it's fantastic! And as a little birthday present, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Laughter) A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and happy birthday again. All right, Madam Clerk, at this time, would you please read the explanatory note regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed-session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channels 34 and 36, and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HGTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give her email a copy to thecityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do I have a motion at this time to approve the minutes of regular enclosed session of November 5, 2025?
Still moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are on our report section of our meeting. Madam Mayor, do you have a report for us this evening?
Of course I do. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. The season of giving has begun, and I'm excited to update you on ways to give back to your community and to celebrate with neighbors. Turkey Drive on November 23, the annual Turkey Drive, which is hosted by other fellow First Foundation, will take place from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. outside of Summit Diner. Residents are encouraged to bring frozen turkeys, non-perishable food items, or monetary donations, and all of the contributions go to the Community Food Bank of New Jersey. And this year is the 25th anniversary, so we're celebrating with music, kids' activities, the emergency vehicles will be there for the kids to enjoy, there will be fire trucks, motorcycles, police vehicles, ambulances, face painting, all kinds of good things. So, come out, and Mr. Chee will be there, I think there's some Summit Diner yummy stuff that's going to be out, so come and enjoy it, come and join us. Toys for Tots is collections underway through December 16. You can drop off new unwrapped toys in the collection bin here in the lobby or at other locations around town, and those locations are listed on the city website. And these donations will help make the holidays brighter for our local children. Thanksgiving at the Community Center. On Thanksgiving Day, the Summit Community Center will host a free Thanksgiving meal from 12 to 2:00 p.m. for anyone who would like to join. Come enjoy a full Thanksgiving spread and a "Celebrate With Neighbors"! Speaking of Thanksgiving, city offices are closed on November 27 and 28, and that will be a parking holiday as well. And last, pardon me, November 28 is Miracle on Elm Street from 1:00 to 5:30 p.m. on the Village Green. There's dance, and music performances, activities for the kids, ice skating, and our tree lighting. I'll be there, and I hope to see you there, too. And warm wishes for a happy and healthy Thanksgiving to everyone in our community. Thank you.
That was a great message. Thank you. Holidays are upon us. All right, our city administrator is not here this evening, she's at a wedding, I believe. I do have a council president report this evening. On Thursday last week, we had a well-attended town hall of having to do with implementation of the rules concerning the lighting down at Tatlock. It was an open meeting. We had a lot of people advocating for their ideas on, you know, some of the, what's the thing?
Parameters.
The parameters around when the lights could be used, how many games, who could use them, all sorts of different things. I thought it was a very, very productive discussion. And as I mentioned at the end of it, and for people at home who might not have been able to attend, if you do have some thoughts around how you think the light should be utilized, please send an email. We're still working on this, and I would say, you know, these guys have been working very, very hard to accommodate both the needs of the neighborhood and the needs of our children who want to play sports. So, send your emails in if you haven't had a chance to comment yet. Second, an update on our round four. I don't have a lot to add versus our last meeting, and I know I'm sounding like a broken record. We are still negotiating with these two developers, as well as Fair Share Housing. We are making some progress, probably not as fast as some of us would like, but we are negotiating in good faith, and we are moving the ball along. As we've talked about, you know, this process does need to be wrapped up, I think, by the end of March. So, you know, we continue to run this process through. As we find, or as we come to agreements, we will let you know, but we're still doing that. One part of our round four, I'm happy to say, in our plan, we do have affordable housing units being created on the site of the old firehouse. That's in our round-four plan, and tonight, we're taking yet another step towards making that a reality. Earlier in the year, if you were paying attention, we purchased what was called the Finger Lot to co-join the four parcels to make it, you know, a better piece of property to sell to a potential developer. That's all been completed. Today, we're on the docket, we're hiring a broker to go out and solicit bids for that property, and we hope to finish that transaction sometime in the middle of next month. So, that's moving along, which is great, and as we continue to kind of implement what we all want is our affordable housing obligation. The last thing I wanted to talk about, I received, a lot of council people did as well, a very interesting email last week, the week before, and it was, it was an email signed by 25, 30 people, including former council people who are Democrat, former council people who are Republican. It was a broad swath of people, and you don't always receive emails like that from such a wide perspective of people. And it was advocating for a, that the city moved towards what would be called nonpartisan elections. And so, for people at home who don't know the terminology, a nonpartisan election would be where you would, and this would just be at the local level. When you come into the voting booth, you would, for local office, meaning this council, you would not see a party affiliation next to a person's name. So, you'd still have people on it, you could have choices, all that good stuff, but there'd be no affiliation. About 20% of New Jersey communities have nonpartisan elections, and this group advocated for that. They cited the rancor around elections, the nationalization, and the vitriol that would go along with our elections, and lamenting it. And I must say, I have a lot of sympathy for that view. I've spoken many, many times about how our elections have just gotten nasty for no reason, particularly for what is essentially a volunteer job up here where people just want what's best for Summit. There is a process to make nonpartisan elections happen. There are really two ways this could, the community could go about it. One way it could happen is the city council can vote to put a referendum on next year's ballot. You'd need a supermajority to pass something like that, I think it would need five out of seven votes, and then the people would decide. My understanding is the results of the referendum would be non-binding, meaning the subsequent council could decide not to do it if people voted for that, but that would be one process, a council vote, five out of seven say yes, and then the people would decide in November whether they would support a movement to change our local elections to nonpartisan. The second way that this could happen, according to my research, and Rosie really helped me out with this, it's a lot, and I will say, there is some contradictory stuff in here, so...
November 5th, 2025?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are on our report section of our meeting. Madam Mayor, do you have a report for us this evening?
Of course I do. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. The season of giving has begun, and I'm excited to update you on ways to give back to your community and to celebrate with neighbors. Turkey Drive on November 23rd, the annual Turkey Drive, which is hosted by other fellow first foundation, will take place from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. outside of Summit Diner. Residents are encouraged to bring frozen turkeys, non-perishable food items, or monetary donations, and all of the contributions go to the Community Food Bank of New Jersey. And this year is the 25th anniversary, so we're celebrating with music, kids' activities, the emergency vehicles will be there for the kids to enjoy, there will be fire trucks, motorcycles, police vehicles, ambulances, face painting, all kinds of good things. So, come out, and Mr. Chee will be there, I think there's some Summit Diner take yummy stuff that's gonna be out, so come and enjoy it, come and join us. Toys for Tots is, collection's underway through December 16th. You can drop off new unwrapped toys in the collection bin here in the lobby, or at other locations around town, and those locations are listed on the city website, and these donations will help make the holidays brighter for our local children. Thanksgiving at the Community Center. On Thanksgiving Day, the Summit Community Center will host a free Thanksgiving meal from 12 to 2:00 p.m. for anyone who would like to join. Come enjoy a full Thanksgiving spread and a "Celebrate With Neighbors." Speaking of Thanksgiving, city offices are closed on November 27th and 28th, and that will be a parking holiday as well. And last, pardon me, November 28th was Miracle on Elm Street from 1:00 to 5:30 p.m. on the Village Green. There's dance, and music performances, activities for the kids, ice skating, and our tree lighting. I'll be there, and I hope to see you there, too. And warm wishes for a happy and healthy Thanksgiving to everyone in our community. Thank you.
That was a great message. Thank you. Holidays are upon us. All right, our city administrator is not here this evening, she had a wedding, I believe. I do have a council president report this evening. On Thursday last week, we had a well-attended town hall of having to do with implementation of the rules concerning the lighting down at Tatlock. It was an open meeting, we had a lot of people advocating their, or for their ideas on, you know, some of the, what's the thing?
Parameters.
The parameters around when the lights could be used, how many games, who could use them, all sorts of different things. I thought it was a very, very productive discussion, and as I met, or I mentioned at the end of it, and for people at home who might not have been able to attend, if you do have some thoughts and around how you think the light should be utilized, please send an email. We're still working on this, and I would say, you know, these guys have been working very, very hard to make and accommodate both the needs of the neighborhood and the needs of our children who want to play sports. So, send your emails in if you haven't had a chance to comment yet. Second, an update on our round four. I don't have a lot to add versus our last meeting, and I know I'm sounding like a broken record. We are still negotiating with the, these two developers, as well as Fair Share Housing. We are making some progress, probably not as fast as some of us would like, but we are negotiating in good faith, and we are moving the ball along. As we've talked about, you know, this process does need to be wrapped up, I think, by the end of March. So, you know, we continue to run this process through, as we find, or as we come to agreements, we will let you know, but we're still doing that. One part of our round four, I'm happy to say, in our plan, we do have affordable housing units being created on the old, the site of the old firehouse, that's, that's in our round four plan, and tonight, we're taking yet another step towards making that a reality. Earlier in the year, if you were paying attention, we purchased what was called the Finger Lot to co-join the four parcels, to make it, you know, a better piece of property to sell to a potential developer. That's all been, that's all been completed. Today, we're on the docket, we're hiring a broker to go out and solicit bids for that property, and we hope to finish that transaction sometime in the middle of the next month. So that's moving along, which is great, and as, as we continue to kind of implement what we all want is our affordable housing obligation. The last thing I wanted to talk about, I received, a lot of council people did as well, a very interesting email last week, the week before, and it was, it was an email signed by 25, 30 people, including former council people from, who are Democrat, former council people who are Republican. It was a broad swath of people, and I, you, fair, you don't always receive emails like that, from such a wide perspective of people. And it was, it was advocating for a, that the city moved towards what would be called nonpartisan elections. And, so for people at home who don't know the terminology, a nonpartisan election would be where you would, and this would just be at the local level. When you come into the, the voting booth, you would, for local office, meaning this council, you would not see a party affiliation next to a person's name. So, there would, you'd still have people on it, you could have choices, all that good stuff, but there'd be no affiliation. About 20% of New Jersey communities have nonpartisan elections, and this group advocated for that. They cited the, the rancor around elections, the politis, the nationalization, and the, and the vitriol that would go along with our elections, and, or lamenting it. And I must say, I have a lot of sympathy for that view. I've spoken many, many times about how our elections have just gotten nasty for no reason, particularly for what is essentially a volunteer job up here, where people just want what's best for Summit. There is a process to make nonpartisan elections happen. There are really two ways this could, the community could go about it. One way it could happen is the city council can vote to put a referendum on next year's ballot. You'd need a supermajority to pass something like that, I think it would need five out of seven votes, and then, then the people would, would decide. My understanding is the, the results of the referendum would be non-binding, meaning the subsequent council could decide not to do it if, if people voted for that, but that would be one process. A council vote, five out of seven say yes, and then the people would decide in November whether they would support a movement to change our local elections to nonpartisan. The second way that this could happen, according to my research, and Rosie really helped me out with this, it's a lot, and, and I will say, there is some contradictory stuff in here, so I would advise anyone who really wants to pursue this to do their own work. But my understanding is that citizens could collect signatures. If they were, if they were to collect, the number of citis, of signatures they would need would be 25% of the number who voted in the last election.
For the Assembly.
For the Assembly, which, which would be just last November, or the vote that happened two weeks ago.
Right.
So, we had, Rosie, what, roughly eight, 8,000-odd votes?
I would say so.
So, you'd have to look up the exact number, but it would mean we'd need a little over 2,000 signatures that would need to be collected and be verified. If someone was able to do that, then it would go to council, who would then vote to put the question on the ballot for November. Council, if they go the route where they can just do this, they have to do it within 40 days of an election, so they could, this council or council next year would have up to August to do this. If citizens were to do it, it takes a little longer. Their deadline would have to be, I think it's 80, 85 days, or 88 days, I think, prior to the subsequent election. So to do that, you'd have to have everything done sometime around, in May, I think is the way the math would work. And, so, so those are the two, the two methods. And, and like I said, I'm, I'm happy to discuss this further with people. I do have a lot of sympathy for, for the idea. There are pros and cons to everything in life around that. But, like I said, I think we live in a wonderful community where people get along, we send our kids to school together, we place, you know, we're on the sidelines together, we go to watch plays where our kids are up on the stage together, and we should be able to have elections that don't have a lot of mudslinging and don't get caught up in what's going on in Washington, D.C. I get it why that's dysfunctional, but I think things we can do to make our own local elections less dysfunctional would be, would be better. So, I'm, I'm happy to continue to talk to people about this, but as I said, there are two ways to, to do this, okay? And that is my council president report for this evening. Councilman Palowski, do we have a historical minute?
We do. What?
You know, it's David, I'm the IT guy.
Wow.
Police chief is now the IT guy.
Okay. You may be familiar with the apartments at the corner of Euclid and Beechwood called The Flynn. But before there was The Flynn, there were The Flynn's. Old timers can tell you about the family business that used to be there, serving our community for over a century. I can't think of anyone better to do this historical minute than a member of the fourth generation of that great family, Dennis Flynn.
I'm Dennis Flynn, formerly of Euclid Avenue in Summit. An Irish immigrant born in 1866, my great-grandfather, Michael Flynn Jr., established a horse and livery stable associated with the Beechwood Hotel, which is now Bors property, in 1889. Known as the Beechwood Stable, he operated the business for 12 years. Michael Flynn passed away in 1901 at age 35, leaving four children and his wife Hannah, who took over the business. Though the first gasoline automotives came to be in the late 1800s, horse and buggy dominated the transportation for the first decade of the 20th century. For a time, the business even housed a horse-drawn ambulance for Overla Hospital. With manufacturing improvements like assembly line production, automobiles became affordable, and health city citizens entered the automotive era. So did the Flynn's. By the 1920s, the Beechwood Stable became Flynn's Garage, from where the family also operated taxi service. By this time, the son of my great-grandparents, Michael and Hannah, my grandfather Raymond Flynn Sr., born in 19, in 1898, had taken over running the operations, and with his mother Hannah, ushered in the air with the sale of gasoline as an ESO, now known as Exxon Gas Station. The business became the oldest ESO Exxon station in the entire Northeast United States. In the 1920s and 30s, the Flynn family business thrived and continued to adjust to the advances in the automotive industry. In the late 1950s or early 1960s, the Flynn's dropped the taxi service to concentrate on auto repairs. My father, Raymond Flynn Jr., born in 1925, known as Buddy, ran the business with Senior until Buddy took over in the mid 70s. I had the pleasure of working with my father, running Flynn's Garage, until Buddy retired in 2004. It was my privilege to continue serving the Summit community thereafter, running Flynn's Garage, until I sold the property in 2013 to a local developer, who turned the garage, the house next door, and the adjacent lot into a stylish rental property, which he named The Flynn. In honor of my family history and our proud tradition of serving this hill city for over 120 years. Thank you.
Excellent.
That's great.
So, I don't know who's familiar with Flynn's Garage, who's here, I'm sure a lot of people watching are, they're a great, great local mechanic. If you went to Lincoln School in the 80s, and probably decades before that, and decades after that, you've definitely filled your, your bicycle tires at Mr. Flynn's. One funny story I have is, my dad was having electrical problems with his car, and he brought it in, and they said, all right, you know, we'll take a look at it, and Mr. Flynn called him and said, well, you got a family of mice living in your car. They're chewing on your electrical wires, but we can take care of that, we've seen it before. So I'm sure he had lots of great stories like that, but, great, thank you, Dennis, if you're watching out there, we appreciate it, and that's it.
All right. Great historical minute, as always. Thank you, Councilman Palowski. Okay, we're moving right along. We have a couple of hearings this evening, at least that's on the schedule. So the first one is a Community Programs and Parking Services ordinance. Madam Clerk, will you please read number 25-3361?
An ordinance amending Chapter 7 Traffic Section 7-8 Parking Subsection 7-8.5 Parking Time Limited on Certain Streets Subsection 7-8.5B2 Time Limit Parking. Parking Zones of the Code of the City of Summit.
Thank you very much. Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. This is ordinance number 25-3361, to change the number of metered parking spaces on Park Avenue. The designated employee parking spaces on Park Avenue implemented in 2021 are currently being underutilized. After speaking with several nearby businesses, it appears that there is no longer a need for the number of employee permit spaces originally established. We will be voting to convert four of the six permit spaces into two-hour paid customer parking. This change will preserve two spaces for all-day employee permit parking, while creating four spaces dedicated to two-hour paid parking, paid, paid customer parking. I moved, I move this ordinance for hearing.
Second. Thank you. All right, I'm gonna open the hearing for this ordinance. At this time, would anyone from the public like to give a comment on this ordinance? All right, seeing no comments, I'm gonna close the public part of this hearing. Council members, any comments on this ordinance? Councilwoman Hamlet.
I just wanted to say, I'm super excited about this. I know it sounds ridiculous, but when I was campaigning, apparently unsuccessfully, I went down to Buena Vista Cafe, and I went there to grab a water and talk to the business owners, and what I found from the business owner, she said, you know, I just can't understand why I own a restaurant, but the individuals who are eating at my restaurant have nowhere to park. And I said, well, you know what, I'll look into it. And, you know, I contacted Nicole, and contacted Kevin, and it turns out, we didn't need all of those spots to be employee spots. So, I guess I would just say, I would encourage the community, just keep telling the new council and the current council, if, if you think it doesn't make sense, it may not, and it's just a simple fix. If it doesn't make sense to you, come to City Hall, ask Rosie, you know, there's no question that's not a good question, and so I just, I was really happy that this owner got a resolution. So thank you, Nicole, and Chief Peters for working on this, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Other comments from council?
And you, Kevin. Sorry, sorry, you too, Smallwood. We only had to redo it a couple times, but you got it.
Other comments from council? All right, I'm gonna close the hearing on this ordinance, and we'll move it right along to our second ordinance for hearing. Madam Clerk, will you please read Safety and Health, number 25-3362?
An ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7 Traffic Section 7-8 Parking Subsection 7-8.4 Stopping or Standing Prohibited During Certain Hours or on Certain Streets.
Thank you very much. Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. Council President, I am going to ask that this ordinance be tabled with a brief explanation, and just to note that by tabling this ordinance, it effectively kills this ordinance, right? So, this will go into next year. But during the period of time when this ordinance was originally tabled at our last council meeting, I received a call from Oak Knoll School expressing concerns with the proposed no-parking restriction from Tulip Street to Colonial Drive. While they understood the visibility concerns raised, they were concerned about making the entire stretch a no-parking zone. So Oak Knoll did indicate that they support restricting parking at a portion of the road where the residents were having difficulty backing out of their driveway. So based on this feedback, based on the feedback I received, in the limited scope of the issue, the broader restriction proposed in this ordinance may be more extensive than what is required to resolve the concern. So for that reason, I believe it be more appropriate for the newly-seeded Safety Committee to revisit this in January and bring forward the revised recommendations. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Do we need a second to table this?
Yes.
A second.
Okay. All right, okay, so, and?
We have to vote.
We have to vote. Okay, so, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmerson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Okay, so we're tabling that. All right, that concludes our ordinances for hearing. Now we're moving on to ordinances for final consideration. We now have one. Madam Clerk, will you please read Community Programs and Parking Services, 25-3361?
An ordinance amending Chapter 7 Traffic Section 7-8 Parking Subsection 7-8.5 Parking Time Limited on Certain Streets Subsection 7-8.5B2 Time Limit Parking. Parking Zones of the Code of the City of Summit.
Thank you so much. Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. This is ordinance number 253361. Having just heard the multiple deliberations on this hearing, I, I move this ordinance for final consideration.
Second. Thank you. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Calmerson?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Okay, we're on to the, our resolution section of the meeting, we have a few this evening. First up is Finance. Finance number one, Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. Proposed Session Discussion Resolution 12199 authorizes the city to contract with the firm of Jones Lang LaSalle Associates, Inc., to connect, to conduct an auction to sell the old firehouse site. Jones Lang LaSalle is well-known and respected in the commercial real estate business. The city anticipates a sealed bid auction with Jones Lang LaSalle to be paid on a sliding scale. 4% of the first $5 million of sales price, 3% on the next $5 million, hopefully 2% above $10 million, you know, if we're lucky. This is well within industry parameters. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Thank you. Any member of the public like to comment on this resolution? Council comments? Councilwoman Hamlet.
I just want to say, the organization, the company that we're working with is very professional, we've had great interactions with them, and I feel really good about having them market the property for the city. Obviously, we're gonna do an auction for the property, but this enables the reach to be a lot larger, and ultimately, we'll get the taxpayers a better price for the property. So they are first-class, they've done all the recent sales track, transactions that you've seen, a lot of them, so we're, we're in the best of hands, and I, I fully support this resolution.
Thank you. Other comments?
Yeah, Council President, I'd like to...
Yes, Councilman Boyer.
Second, Councilwoman Hamlet's notion about JLL. I had the opportunity to work with a bunch of their employees when they were property managers for Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield, and they, they are an amazing company. So I think that the city is in good hands, and I support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Yeah, I, I would just say a couple of things. This is a very long, winding road of, that our, the property at the firehouse is taken. You know, I was first approached around this idea to declare the firehouse an area in redevelop, an area in need of redevelopment over 10 years ago, when I was on council back then, and it kind of sounded like a good idea. You could work with the developer, you could get what you wanted out of the site, you could put all these conditions on, and tailor, make it to, to, to be what the community would like, all these things sounded fantastic. In addition, you could, you could structure payments through what's called pilots, payment in lieu of taxes, where, you know, the city would keep the bulk of it, you wouldn't have to send that much down to the county, all these great things. Sounded great. I remember there was a council person who had just gotten off the board, he served for nine years, many of us know him, he was a great person, Tom Getzandanner, great volunteer for our community. He grabbed me and said, Mike, in our zip code, 07901, we don't need to do an ANOR. This is crazy. Auction it. You get the highest price. And I said, Tom, come on, look at all these great things you can do with ANOR and stuff. And I admit, he was 100% right, I was 100% wrong in making that decision. And, you know, we went through it, and, you know, the rest is history, as they say, you know, we ended up with the Broad Street West problems, and the community came out and completely rejected, you know, this massive overdevelopment. I, I give council, year ago, a lot of credit for rezoning this, taking this property out of ANOR, and here we are with a zoning in place, it's much more reflective of the values of our community, much more reflective of our master plan. This, this is a big part, as I mentioned earlier, of our round four obligation to do this, and here we are, we are, we will see what it is worth. I have every confidence in JLL that they will canvass the developer community, and we will get the best price. And, you know, I hope, as Councilwoman Toth said, let's get some 3% commission numbers in there, but we'll see what it's worth, and, you know, the market is the market. So I'm, I'm excited to have this happen, so, so I support this as well. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving right along, Finance number two, Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. I'm gonna bundle two and three, if I may.
Yes, please.
Resolution 12258 authorizes the city to contract with Magic Touch Construction Company to provide on-call plumbing services for 2026 and 2027. Resolution 12268 authorizes the city to contract with both Sunny Electric, Inc. and CRD Electrical, LLC, to provide on-call electrician services for the same period. The city needs these on-call services. All three companies meet all of the bidding specifications, provide competitive wages to their employees, and are close enough to Summit to be responsive. I move to adopt these resolutions.
Second. Comments from the public? Comments from council? Councilman Boyer.
Council President, just to, just to be clear for the public, we see these kind of sort of big numbers there, they don't have to spend that. So, I mean, it could be $10,000, not 35, right? So the, the idea to have them is just so that we don't have to be in a scramble to find somebody to fix something relatively quickly, like our pothole next to a firehouse, right, something like that. So, I know Director Schrager would appreciate that. that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hamlet.
I just have a quick question. I'm not trying to, I didn't notice it until now. Is there a reason that in the award bid, it says not to exceed $20,000 per year, Claire, but in the memos, it says not to exceed $35,000?
There's two different.
There's two different.
We bundled the two.
Right, but in, so, okay, let me see.
$35,000 for the plumbing and then $20,000 for each of the electrical.
Got it. Okay, so the not to exceed for the plumbing is 35 and the not to exceed for the electric is 20?
For each.
For each. Okay, but in the memo, it says that it's not to exceed $20,000 for on-call electric. 20 each.
It's each.
Each.
I understand. I understand. This is what I'm looking at here. Where to say that? It says not to exceed 20 each.
There's two electrical companies.
Right.
Oh, there's two. There's two electrical. We're using two on-call services. Okay, thank you. That explains it. Sorry. Okay, I thought it was only one. That makes sense.
Any other comments from council? Going to say plumbers make more money, but maybe not. I don't know. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving right along. Finance number four, Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. Proposed Session Discussion Resolution 12273 authorizes the continuation of an existing situation. Since 2018, Detective Robert Freeman has held a full-time position with the New Jersey Policemen's Benevolent Association. Detective Freeman is currently the Deputy Director, and while we miss him here in Summit, he's been very effective in his role with the NJPBA. The NJPBA reimburses the city for Detective Freeman's salary and benefits, so there's no cost to Summit for him to hold the position. And should the city have need of Detective Freeman's services, Chief Peters can recall him to active duty. The city entered into an agreement memorializing all of this with Detective Freeman and the NJPBA back in 2018. That agreement lapsed at the end of 2024 and Resolution 12273 reinstates the agreement through 2028. I move to adopt this resolution.
A second. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, last finance, number five, Councilwoman Toth.
Okay, thank you, Council President. Proposed Session Discussion Resolution 12278 authorizes a payout of 70 hours of compensatory time to Sergeant Jeffrey Peer. This is permitted under the city's collective bargaining agreement with the Summit PBA Local, and Sergeant Peer has requested the payout in writing. I move to adopt this resolution.
A second. Would anyone from the public like to comment? Council comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving right along. Community Programs and Parking Services, number one, Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. I would actually like to combine both one and two, if that's possible.
That is very possible.
Awesome. This is ID number 11279 and ID number 12281. We, first of all, again, I'd like to wish a very happy birthday to Mr. Director, Department of Community Programs Director Mark Ozerowski. So happy birthday. And you should probably leave after these and go celebrate it with your family. So with that being said, my son is 17. He will be 18 in January. My daughter is 15. I took my kids to Tatlock Playground and there, they played on the same items that are still there today. There's a few pieces that have been removed because they were unsafe. So with that being said, I'm very pleased to bring forward the contract award for Phase One of the Tatlock Playground project. This project is being completed in two phases to allow the city to pursue and receive county and state reimbursement grants while still keeping the progress moving for our community. Phase One includes the installation of several exciting new play features, the very popular and the highest ranked playground piece by the children for the Washington Owls, the Owl Play Structure. Log scrambles, hideaway trees with monkey bars, balance nets, and other engaging elements designed to support imaginative and active play. The existing swings will remain in place as part of the full build-out. However, I know that there are two swings that are missing and they have decided that they are going to give us two swings to get them installed. David, are they installed yet?
Not yet, but for.
All right, we're getting there. Soon, I hope. The current red rope climber will also remain for now and will be replaced during Phase Two, anticipated in 2026. With the final Okta Net Crows Nest Steel Tunnel Slide Play feature, I have no idea what that is, but it sounds fun. We are especially proud of this project as it reflects the tremendous input and creativity of the public schools' ideas classes, feedback from citywide community survey, and thoughtful adjustments made to keep the project within budget while still delivering a high-quality and inclusive play space. We were also considering the contract for, both of these contracts are actually by Coben, Inc. through the New Jersey State Contract for the Playground Equipment, along with a second contract by Coben, Inc. through the Bergen County Cooperative Pricing System. We're excited to take this important step, next step toward bringing and reimagined Tatlock Playground to life for families across Summit. I move to approve this resolutions, these resolutions.
Second. All right. Would any member of the public wish to comment on these two resolutions? Members of council, comments? Councilman Boyer?
Nope.
No, I'm sorry. All right, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. This is quick. I just want to make sure that we recognize the ideas students because they were really thoughtful. This was a project that they come to me every year and ask, the teacher comes and asks for what the children can do to give back to the community. So it was really fun to have David work with them and come up with this really fun idea and they really got into it and they did a great presentation. So I just want to make sure that we thank them for their input.
Very good. Councilman Boyer.
I have to say, before council, I did not know how expensive playgrounds were. Someone said, "Hey, we're going to put in a playground." I was like, "Yeah, let's go. Let's do it." Right? And then it was like, "Yes, you know, half a million dollars." What? What's going on? I'm so happy to see this come to fruition. I think I'm the only person up here that is a Washington Owl. I don't know. I think Bob went to Lincoln School, but, yeah, you did, right? So seeing the owl there actually is nostalgic. It's like, I love that. That is great. And by the way, those kids are smart. They, I mean, they, that's their idea. That is great. Those Washington School kids are smart, I got to tell you.
Wise.
Yeah, wise, right? But I'm happy to see this. I'm happy to see the other one and maybe playground. You know, I'm happy that we've gotten these things done. So thank you to Mark. Just good job in Community Programs, good staff, all your, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilwoman Hamlet.
I would just say thank you to Mark and David for getting the ball across the goal line here. We've learned a lot in the last three years. I think I started out in Department of Community Programs, driving you guys crazy. So it's nice to see, it's really nice to see all the hard work you do pay off. That's why you do this and that's why you come to work every day. And I know, again, from knocking on a lot of doors in the last couple of months that a lot of people are waiting on this playground. So just well done.
Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. So I just want to give a special thanks to Mark and David from Community Programs because it was their idea to have the community engagement survey, but also the, using the Public Schools Ideas classes so that you really got the feedback from the students and the kids that actually use it on a day-to-day basis. And that was your idea. So thank you very much. You guys did a tremendous job. I'm glad that we're able to do this in phases. You know, we just, one of the things that you have to decide when you're looking at a playground and how to replace it is you actually start from the bottom up, right? Are we going to keep the same kind of flooring or is it going to remain natural? Are you going to use something synthetic? And I think we ultimately, you know, that's the reason why it takes so long to kind of plan things out, other than, you know, getting the money for it, is figuring out what you're going to put in it, which the kids told us what they wanted. And that's what we're doing. And does it take a little bit longer? Does it cost a little bit more? Yes, but you know what? That's what the kids wanted and we're fortunate enough to be, you know, I think we've, not only are we getting some grant money for this, but we're also, there is a lot of donations for this as well. And so we're very fortunate that we have a very giving community. And, you know, the Elks did a great job in raising some money for us as well. But, you know, this is a long time coming, but because we're keeping the natural flooring of this, right? Did I say something wrong? Okay. All right. You looked at me like I was like, all right, happy birthday. Anyway, basically just want to say that this, you guys did a great job keeping the same type of natural flooring of it, not flooring, but like the natural, what do you call it? Surrounding, thank you. We're able to do this in phases. Because if you do something synthetic, then you've got to basically do it all at once. And I think this is a fantastic job of getting, you know, a lot of this done as quickly as possible. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Hamlet.
I just want to also thank, the unsung hero of a lot of this is Director Schrager's department. There's a lot of things that go behind the scenes that he's not getting any awards for, but it's very, very complicated. And there's a lot of coordination that goes on between Director Schrager's department and DCP. It's really complicated, lights and engineering plans. So thank you to Director Schrager and his leadership. You don't get a lot of thanks for the playgrounds, but you are behind the scenes 100%.
Thank you. Other comments?
Yeah, I would just echo thanks to Mark and David. This is great. And it's fantastic when you get so many aspects of the community involved in a project. And it'll be awesome when it comes to fruition, you know, from the children, from the donors, you know. We have, as Councilman Smallwood said, an incredibly giving community that help out and make these things happen. And it's great. This is not the only playground that we're working on right now. So really, these are these infrastructure investments that you have to make. They cost money, but you need to prioritize things like this for our community. So I'm really, really happy that we've done this. And, you know, maybe you guys, next year, can do like a team-building thing on the owl or something. It'd be really cool.
Good luck.
Yeah. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Moving right along. Law and Labor has a few. Councilman Pulowski, Law and Labor, number one.
Thank you. This is Resolution ID number 12290 to authorize the sale of real property at 396 Broad Street, which is the old firehouse property. We've discussed the sale of the old firehouse site, which is now known as the Morris Broad Crossroads or MBC Zone for a long time now. The Summit Fire Department is fully operational at its new space and we have received an appraisal valuing the property to be at least $4.6 million. The city needs these funds to service our debt on the new firehouse in particular, address deferred maintenance, and to operate the municipality. Selling this property is important to the municipal budget. This resolution sets the minimum for what will be a sealed bid auction at $4.6 million. I move to adopt this resolution.
A second.
All right, comments from the public? Comments from council? Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. This is a great move. You know, the city and us council, you know, we're obligated to manage public resources efficiently as possible. And selling the property and using the proceeds to reduce debt reinforces our long-term financial stability and that is responsible governance. This strategy also protects you, the taxpayers, from increased taxes. So I'm looking forward to selling this property. Hopefully, we get way more, you know, Summit's a popular town, so hopefully we get way more than the minimum. But I support this. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Other comments? Madam Mayor.
I just want to say because our city administrator/CFO is not here, she has been commenting on the sale of this property as something that, when she started here eight years ago, this was a conversation, this property needed to be sold to fund the firehouse, that beautiful building that we have now for our fire department. So I just want to make sure that, since she's not here, I wanted to comment on that.
Good comments. Other comments? Councilwoman Hamlet.
I just want to say this is a big day for the community. So if tap into, listening to this meeting, this would definitely be a headliner. I ran on this the first time when 22 or 2300 residents were packing meetings till 2:00 a.m. You know, I think I mentioned it at maybe the debate, but when Jack Cooper died most recently and we stood at his funeral home and we looked out in that area, that's the area that all of you fought for. It was Broad Street West. And it's really, really important to understand that the residents spoke out and they want character and they want things to be within the character of Summit. And I ran on that. And so a month before my tenure here ends, I'm proud that, and I spent most of the day on the phone with Rosie trying to get all the auction details done, but I'm proud to say that we will get this back as a ratable for the taxpayer and it will be within the character of Summit. And at the end of the day, this was a huge win for the community. It's what all of you wanted. And I'm just very, very happy and pleased to be a part of the team that got it done. So thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Yeah, I would just wrap it up by reiterating what the mayor said. I've also sat in with city administrator Baldwin about the importance of the funding for this. When this was originally envisioned, you know, the reason this property is for sale, it was because the firehouse was no longer usable. It was too small. The bays were too small for current technology. You couldn't put modern trucks in there anymore. We had to move. So that started this whole cascade of getting to here. But in between there, as just mentioned, we have a brand-new firehouse down the hill. That firehouse was originally, I think, budgeted for like $11 million. And then with COVID and changes, I think it ended up costing over $16 million. That's a big number. We have $16 million in debt that we're servicing as a result of that. That puts a strain on your budget. And it was always envisioned that we would recoup some of that by selling the property in order to pay down some debt. It just makes financial sense and it's something, I think that it's not, it's not a want. I think it's a need. I mean, we all know, we've talked about this already, the budgeting next year is going to be difficult. You know, health costs are going up a lot, right, Jennifer? We're trying to mitigate that to the best we can by changing plans and stuff, but these are still double-digit increases that are going to be staring the city in the face. We have, you know, this, this is an asset that, you know, we'll get market price for and it'll go a long, long way to help through that budget process that will really begin in earnest next month, right?
Now.
Now, yeah, now. I know you guys are working on it already. So, yeah, so I support this resolution as well. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay, Law and Labor, number two, Councilman Pulowski.
Thank you. This is Resolution ID number 12240 to authorize 2026 city solicitor and labor council services in excess of $17,500, not to exceed $250,000. in excess of $17,500, not to exceed $250,000. Every year, we contract for a city solicitor at the end of the calendar year for the following year. This resolution is to renew our contract with Cleary, Giacobi, Alfieri, and Jacobs. Matt Giacobi started in Summit as labor council in 2016 and became the city solicitor in 2018. He's never raised his hourly rates or monthly retainer in the near decade that he's been with us. And he won't be doing that for 2026 either. Over the years, Matt has provided the city excellent work, zealously advocated for Democrat and Republican councils alike, Broad Street West, Maple Street, the resident protection ordinance, and the camping ordinance immediately come to mind. With that, I move this ordinance for adoption.
Second. All right, comments from the public? Comments from council? Councilwoman Hamlet?
I would just say I just want to thank Matt for his guidance and leadership over the years. You know, when you first get onto council, you get some advice where you're just supposed to fire all your professionals and start over. And I remember when we took charge, I started to learn really early that there's a lot of value in having a city solicitor who, again, as Bob just said, he supports Democrats, he supports Republicans, he knows the law, and he's always going to put us in a good position. Mr. Giacobi's firm is working multiple different issues right now for the city. And his firm is fair. They give us wonderful guidance. And, you know, Matt understands what needs to be done, what the law is, and how to guide all of us council members, regardless of what party we're in. He hasn't steered us wrong. And I, I think that, you know, I just want to say thank you for everything, and I'm, I'm really proud to support this resolution and the fantastic services that your firm provides.
Thank you. Good comments. Other comments? Councilman Boyer.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate the same thing that Councilwoman Hamlet just said. Mr. Giacobi, you've done a fine job. It's been a whirlwind the last two years, and I appreciate your service. I know you can pay for it, but, you know, hey. The other thing is, I hope the city never has to pay you a quarter of a million dollars ever, but, you know. But no, but thank you for your service, and I appreciate you, and I support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilwoman Comelson.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to vote no on this simply because we have a new council coming in. And I think that they need to be a part of the discussion since this is a contract for next year. I'm just saying, I want, I want them to be a part of the discussion. So, just letting everybody know now.
Just a question. We, Councilwoman Comelson, you, your committee put together a RFP schedule for our professionals, right? Is the city solicitor is part of that, right?
Yes.
When is the city solicitor roll up? You just, we just literally did this. So, when, when is, as part of this schedule where we decided to spread this out over a few years, I think we just did the auditor, is that? We just RFP'd the auditor, which is great, and I appreciate what you guys did. I thought there was a recommendation when the solicitor would come up for RFP, which you guys put together. So, I'm, I'm just a little confused as to why you're changing your mind now.
Well, I'm not, I mean, I can't always see into the future. Nobody can see into the future. People have expressed concern about ways some meetings have gone, and I just think it's a discussion. I'm not ready to say yes tonight, is what I'm saying.
People.
I'm, I'm just, members of the public, members of the public have expressed concern. I'm, I'm just, I was just trying to give everybody a heads up to let you know. Like, I know that it's going to pass, and I'm just trying to be upfront and say that I was going to vote no.
All right, I'm just confused. Like, we, we have professionals. They're professionals. They serve all of us up here. They don't care whether you have an R or a D next to your name. I don't even ask, I couldn't tell you half the, what their political affiliation is. That's how it should be. I completely agree. When we talked earlier, we talked, we, we shouldn't have professionals forever. There should be a process where we vet them every, every so often in order just to make sure we're getting good service and such. And, and I have no doubt if we RFP'd during the schedule, you know, Matt's firm would, would perform very, very well around that. But we have a schedule for a reason. This just seems arbitrary to me to decide now we're changing council and we're throwing out what was a well-thought-out process in order to RFP professionals? It, it is, it's arbitrary. It makes no sense. We change councils all the time. Professionals shouldn't be, you know, there, there's a litmus test now. You have to, you know, this is just, can go down a bad rabbit hole around trying to, you know, oh, I have to worry who's going to be elected? Have to change how I behave my job? Really, really slippery slope here. We have a system in place where we, you put it together, Councilwoman Comelson, that was very transparent. Every year, we're going to do a few professional services. The, the people will know, the, the staff will know that, who they have to deal with. And it's a process. It should be a transparent process. It shouldn't be arbitrary, oh, we're changing now, so we need something to change. I completely disagree with that logic, completely. Matt has been nothing but professional, nothing. I've sat here for 15 months during some very contentious meetings, and he's been nothing but courteous and kind to the public, always. And to bring this up, it's just, again, I, I completely disagree. He deserves our thanks for the job that he's done. It's been amazing. And the reason we do the city solicitor in December, because it's the, one of the most important roles we have to have. And to just to say I'm going to vote no, we, we need a city solicitor in the seat January 1st. That's why we do it now. It, it's, it's never been, oh, we have a change in council. We, we're going to change out our solicitor. Never, ever, because that is arbitrary. See how it goes. Stick to your schedule that you worked so hard on. That's how this should work. And, and again, I couldn't be more pleased with the work that Mr. Giacobi's done. He is knowledgeable. We have gone through some incredibly difficult, you know, negotiations and processes. You know, I sometimes shirk at the bill, but it, it's not his fault that we're in some of these situations. And he's provided excellent advice, fantastic advice to myself, and I, I don't want to speak for others, but for other people up here as well. And I, I do know the staff lean on him very, very hard. And I 100% support this, this resolution, hiring him again. Councilwoman Hamlet?
I would just like to say for the two years before I was on council, there, there wasn't any resident in Summit who probably argued with Matt Moore when I was standing at the podium. So, when I got elected, or just challenged him, when I got elected, I thought, you know, here I was arguing with the, you know, about the Broad Street West project, you know, how am I going to work with Matt? And, you know, he's a professional. And throughout my last three years, we didn't always agree on everything, but I would have the adult conversation with Matt, like, hey, how could we handle this differently? Or, you know, maybe I'm not thinking about this the right way. Can you give me guidance? And as an elected official, that's, that's why you lean on professionals. And, you know, what's really scary with your comment, your one charge last year was to get this RFP. Your admin really doesn't have a lot on their plate. I have 12 resolutions tonight, like 45, 50 pages. What's scary is that we didn't have these discussions this year because the next thing I'm afraid that'll happen in January is you want to fire Serenian's firm, for our affordable housing firm. So, you know, if our professionals aren't leaning your way, does that mean that we get rid of them? That's what's really, really scary. And as elected officials, you have conversations with professionals if you have a struggle or you're concerned or they're acting unethical. I mean, Mark Leckington, our administrative agent, is one of the best in the state. And I have no idea what his political party is. I probably have a feeling, but he's phenomenal. I mean, I call him a couple times a week. I mean, these are professionals, and if they're doing something unethical, we, we had a process to go through the RFPs. That was in our committee. That was our job. And if we didn't do that, we should have had those discussions in committee. I'm sorry you're having to go through this tonight.
I am as well.
It's okay.
Councilman Smallwood.
I will be voting yes for this. Because I, I don't know what I'm going to do next year other than text you and give you the under and over of when the meeting's going to end. No, you've, you've been, you know, my two years here have been tremendous working with you. You've been extremely responsive whenever I needed you, had a question. And, you know, I, I wanted to thank you for your service. And, you know, you've, as, as Council President mentioned, you, you've worked on both the majority of Democrat councils and majority of Republican councils over the, the last decade. And I, I just don't understand how you're, as, as an independent advisor to us, not as a political advisor. And I, I want to say you've done a tremendous job. Thank you very much, and I will be voting yes for this. Are you hiring?
Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. I think that some of the members on council here are impugning motives that probably don't exist. I don't believe that this is a political decision. So much as the incoming council majority would like the opportunity to hire its own council, I'm going to join Councilmember Calmenson in voting against this.
I would say, but Councilwoman Comelson said that there were members of the public who didn't, who spoke out against him. I don't know what that means. It doesn't sound like it's a council person decision, if, she just said it. So, I'm, I'm not quite sure. And, and again, every single year, why is this next council so different than every single council that has been elected over the last 30 or 40 years that get the city solicitor that gets appointed in November of the prior year? That is how it has always worked because you need a city solicitor who sits on the dais January 1st. So, I would love to hear why this incoming council is so special that they need a, a different solicitor unlike any other council over the last 25 years.
Do you like a response?
Yes, absolutely. It was a question.
Okay, I, you, you hadn't acknowledged me there. I wasn't certain. Thank you. This incoming council is thinking a little differently. May, and certainly Mr. Giacobi will continue until and unless he's replaced. But we, we know how the vote is going to go tonight.
Set? Oh, yes, please, Madam Mayor.
I, I just want to, I think from a, I sit in this building a lot, here a lot of hours. Sometimes they want to throw me out, but the city staff really does rely on the professionals. And I do think that a relationship is important and the, the sort of trust and the, the interactions and sort of the historical knowledge, the institutional knowledge that comes with having somebody that's consistent is really important. So, I implore you to consider that when you think about this.
Councilman Boyer.
Listen, I, I think that the new majority has every right to make any change that they want to. The residents voted for these folks to come in and do something different if they would like, just like how they voted for us two years ago, right? And that's their prerogative, right? I would say, though, that do your research about Mr. Giacobi. And you may find that he represents multiple different municipalities for a reason, because he's good. So, I mean, you don't want to throw out the, the baby with the bathwater, right? So, what you see on television or YouTube or whatever, that's not private legal counsel, though. Private legal counsel is different. The conversations that you have one-on-one or with a group with your attorney is, is, that's where you're, you're rating a person, right? Like, so I would say, you know, my, my advice, you take it or leave it. Come in and see how that council, see how that council is, right? See how he advises you. And then, you know, make a fair judgment of what you would like to do. But, again, the new majority has every right to come in and vote. This is a, this is a council-heavy government style, right? You have every right to make any changes that you want. The residents elected you to do it. And, you know, but, Mr. Giacobi, I support you. I support this resolution, though. Thanks.
Council President. Councilman Palowski first.
The only thing that I would add to all this is if there were complaints about how meetings were being run, I don't know if they came yesterday or six months ago, I would have liked to have heard those complaints. I would have liked to have had them passed on. And, and when I spoke to Councilwoman Toth about this, you know, her explanation as to why she didn't want to go with this resolution was that, you know, it's been 10 years. It's time to go out for an RFP and see what else is out there. But since I'm getting from this meeting is that the new council has already had discussions and decided that they want to hire somebody new. And I would have appreciated knowing that, too, and why. You know, maybe I would have voted differently tonight, but I'm voting for this.
Councilman Smallwood.
I just want to reiterate that what Councilman Boyer just said, I, I agree wholeheartedly with. And the, the new council has every right to make any decisions. But one of the things I, I want to touch upon is you may hear from residents about Mr. Giacobi, but he doesn't represent the residents. He represents this council. He protects this council. And he has done a phenomenal job over the last 10 years. His job is not to protect the residents. He's our attorney. And, you know, I, this is one of the things, very few things, that if a resident came up to me and said, hey, I don't like Mr. Giacobi. Mr. Anonymous didn't like Mr. Giacobi. I think they made up for whatever reason. But, you know, it, it doesn't, for me, I would explain to them, like, well, listen, he is our attorney. He represents us. He protects us. He makes sure, he's, he makes, his job is to make sure that we are doing everything within the legal structure of this council. And I agree. From a payroll standpoint, I, I mentioned to Jennifer and Tammy, I think Jennifer, but Prime Point is our payroll company. I think they've done a great job. I think they charged too much for their time and attendance. And I think that should be on, you know, an RFP at some point within the next year. I think we just signed their contract within the last couple of weeks. But, you know, again, what Council President mentioned, you're an admin. You, if this is something that you wanted to do to go out to RFP, then it, it should have been on, on the agenda. And it wasn't. But now that the election's over and there's a new election, now all of a sudden, you want to put it out to RFP? Or you're not going to support this resolution to, to support this? And I, I, I find that, that challenging. And, again, he's here to protect us, and he's done it for both Republicans and Democrats who have had the majority of this, this dais. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. All right, Law and Labor, number three, Councilman Palowski.
I think this is to adopt the schedule. All right, this is Resolution number, ID number 12221 to adopt. All right, this is resolution number, ID number 12221, to adopt the council meeting schedule for next year. Which specifies that there are no meetings in August. I move to pass this resolution.
I second.
All right, comments from the public?
Good evening. Just wondering if, does that have the change, because what I, what I, what I'm concerned about is, is when you go to Ecode 360, and it says the second and the fourth Tuesday, you know, here we are on a Monday, last meeting was a Wednesday. I just, I think that that, I just want to make sure that that's specified in the new meeting schedule, because it's inconspicuous for people who aren't completely familiar with the town. It's, because, because I consider that, it's like, you're in violation of your own ordinance, you know? I know you guys put out the annual notice, I'm not sure if you guys put the public, I didn't really follow it like that, but it's just, it should, it should specify the day of the meeting as well.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public? Comments from council, Councilwoman Palowski?
Excuse me?
Councilman Palowski. Didn't I say that right?
This, I have a question for Rosie. Our municipal code, do we publish it on Ecode 360?
Yes.
Okay. And so I want to make sure that when we pass our council rules next year, which is where we're gonna include the specificity that's necessary, that we make sure that we get that over to Ecode 360.
It'll have to be an ordinance change, in order to effectuate that.
So if we change the council rule, but that isn't.
Yeah, the council rules, but I think what Mr. Anonymous is saying is that it doesn't jive with the council meeting schedule that we put out, so, because it doesn't specify the days. We just say Tuesdays, every, first and third. So we have to say that on occasion, when it's necessary, we will either move it to Monday, and sometimes Wednesday.
Okay.
Because that's how it works. Or any other day of the week. Occasionally, we have had a Thursday.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna be on Law and Labor again, so I will make sure I do that, so that Mr. Nobody doesn't have to tell me about it.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilwoman Hamlet.
Yes, just a question. Bob, was there any discussion on eliminating one of the, or maybe Rosie, one of the November meetings? This is, this is a tough, whether you win or lose in an election, this is a tough month. You're literally rolling out of campaigning for several months, not that we're complaining, but it's difficult with elections, and then having a meeting the day, I think, what did we have, a meeting the day after the election?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, my head wasn't even on, I mean, I was trying, but, I don't know, just, just a question if there would be a way to combine and just have one meeting, I don't know. Anybody have any thought?
I would love nothing better than to have one meeting. But there's bills to pay.
Yeah.
There's things that have to happen every two weeks.
I understand.
And I just don't see that being a possibility. I really don't. I wouldn't recommend it.
Yeah, I understand. I just wanted to ask the question, because I.
Appointments especially.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other comments from council? Councilwoman Toth.
I was just going to point out that in 2026, unlike the last couple of years, there are no public school, or no high school or middle school graduation on Tuesday. So our second meeting in June will in fact be on the Tuesday, and won't catch anyone up short this year, this coming year.
Other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving right along to Capital Projects and Community Services, number one, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is number one of twelve, so everybody bear with me, I have a lot on the agenda tonight, so ask for your patience. This is the first one, Resolution ID 12263, which is to award the bid for emergency sewer repair to Mesorcola Excavating in the amount of $209,240, in accordance with the City Treasurer's Certification of Availability and Funds, a copy of which is attached to this resolution. And as recommended, recommended in a memo from the City Engineer, bids were rewarded to the lowest responsible bidder, and that was Mesorcola Excavating. I'd like to move this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Capital Projects, number two, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to combine 12261 and 12262, if that's okay?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Great. So these resolutions, 12261 and 12262, are awarding the bids for Canoe Brook Parkway Improvement Project in the amount of $1,234,567.89, in addition to awarding the bid for Mount Vernon Avenue and Kent Place Boulevard Improvement Project in the amount of $419,085. And the, sorry, just give me one second, since I'm combining these. Okay, so the bid for Mount Vernon Avenue and Kent Place Boulevard was awarded to AJM Contractors in Clifton. That's right, sorry, coming, just get to the next one. And the bid for, sorry, I knew I shouldn't have combined these, and I get out of rhythm, it probably would have been easier. Erin, the name of the, for Canoe Brook?
Through you, Council President, Portofino.
That's right, Portofino.
Springfield.
Okay, yep, I got it, sorry about that. Yep, Portofino Builders out of Springfield, and all of the capital accounts are attached. So I'm really excited to award these bids, great job, Director Schreger. We're gonna be getting sidewalks on Mount Vernon. I knocked on all those doors, everybody was supportive except for one or two households of those sidewalks. Canoe Brook Parkway overwhelmingly wanted the sidewalks, and just really excited for the, to keep those residents safe, and it was a long process, but it was one, I know you're gonna be glad to put to bed, Director Schreger, I would just ask that we work with the community and make sure that we take as little trees down as possible, and just hold ourselves to a higher standard when it comes to that neighborhood, because we know, we all know they'll be up here hollering if we don't get it right. So I'd like to pass both of these resolutions.
Second. Comments from the public? Comments from council? I would just, Rosie and I were just commenting. So I just did the math, the total bid is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7.89. And I was like, that, that can't be right. But I just, I just literally added it up.
It does come out to be that way.
Is that correct?
Yes, we checked it numerous times as well, the question is circumstantial, or were they trying to be cute?
Yeah.
It's pretty impressive either way.
Yeah, in both ways, yeah. Other comments from the public, or from council, I'm sorry?
The, the only thing that I would like to say, Council President, is that I'm happy to see that a lot of the drainage, the sewers, were included in there. I know that was a big concern of the residents. Flooding is always a concern in Summit, and to see that included in there was a big win. So thank you, Director Schreger, for, for adding that, thinking about that as well.
Other comments from council? Councilman Smallwood.
Yes, I would just like to mention that the, I'm really happy to see that the Mount Vernon and Kent Place project going through. I know this was canceled two, two years ago, and they, three years ago. And they've been waiting for this for a long time, and I, I remember walking on it about four weeks ago, and it was getting about 5:30, 6 o'clock, and I, I felt nervous, you know, walking around that little short bend, and I couldn't imagine living on that street. So I'm very happy for those residents. So thank you, Erin, for, for getting that done.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilman Palowski.
Yeah, I just want to echo Councilman Boyer on the drainage. That's been my refrain throughout this process. You know, if, if folks want the sidewalks, that's great, but I think initially when we got this grant, drainage was a big focus. I've driven down there, when we've had heavy rains, seen cars stalled out, so I'm glad that we're gonna take some measures to address that while we do this project.
Thank you. Other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Capital Projects, number four, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution 12205, this is to authorize ESC New Jersey Co-op Contract Purchase for One Vehicle Left in the Amount of $56,301, in accordance with the City Treasurer's Certification, with the account numbers attached, which is attached to here, pursuant to Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Cooperative Pricing Contract 25, 2425-14, purchase order in that amount to Hoffman Services in Newark. So I'd like to move this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Capital Projects, number five, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. So I'm just gonna give a quick explanation from my own sanity on this one. So we just completed the temporary repairs of the, of the tier garage, so there was a lot of concrete falling from the, from the ceiling, so we had passed a resolution a few weeks ago, in order for those repairs, you're probably doing a much better job explaining this than me, in order for those prepared, repairs to be finished, this resolution will give us authorization for ONS to do the plan for the entire garage going forward. Is that correct, Director Schreger?
Yes, through you, Council President. What was done recently was the garage was made safe from delaminated and deteriorating concretes, we were able to open up a fair amount of spaces, but that is just really opening spaces for now, now we need to do the work. There is high estimates for what that work will, you know, cost, but this is the cost to hire a professional, ONS is very reputable, they've been working for the city for a little bit, to prepare the construction bid documents and specifications for the next phase of that improvement. We will look at things about adding a roof, adding snow doors, as well as, you know, maintenance plans moving forward, but we'll also stage it, so it's, it might not be lump sum at once, what's critical first, and then, you know, move along over the next few years, so.
Thank you, Director Schreger. And I would just add that, and I'll go through the, the details, ONS is one of the most highly regarded, regarding parking lots, and so the new council should be in good shape to Claire to get that garage fixed, so we'll pass this one along to you. So this is Resolution 12255, authorizing professional services agreement in excess of $17,500 for engineering services in the tier garage rehabilitation, not to exceed $78,000 for ONS associates. And I would like to move this resolution, I think we did enough explaining.
Second. Thank you. Would any member of the public like to comment on this resolution? All right, comments from council? Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. I was actually gonna wait for my council comments at the end, but just in case people decide to, you know, turn off their TVs, I might as well just enter it now, say it now. I'm glad we're able to, to get this done, and, because we were really jammed on parking, and allow, you know, having this done, I believe we're gonna be able to open up our third level on Monday. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So we're gonna be able to open up our third level on the tier garage on Monday, and then after further review from ONS on the fourth floor, we're gonna keep that closed for now until further notice. Hopefully, we'll be able to get that open sooner rather than later. But at least, I believe, starting on Monday, that we'll have the third floor of the tier garage open. So it'll really help relieve some of the downtown parking for the employees, and, and resident commuters.
Thank you. Other comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All righty, moving right along, Capital Projects, number six, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Hey, still me. This is Resolution 12275, authorizing state contract per, purchase of Spatial Data Logic, STL through Dell Marketing. The amount of this is $54,750, as a cost that we, we have every year, which I'll talk about a little more in my comments, but I'd like to pass this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public? Comments from council? Yeah, please, Councilwoman Hamlet.
So I think STL, for, for anyone who's sort of a municipal government geek, it's actually a really, is actually a pretty cool tool. You can learn a lot about STL. There are some things right now, and Augusto and Director Schreger, you can opine on, on what we're missing, and I know that's sort of the, I talked with Augusto about it today, that's some of the permitting we can't do digitally. I would be curious to see, so right now, we have 25 users that are priced out in here at a rate of like $2,100 each, and I used to sell something called NetSuite back in the day, and, and you'd be priced per user, but sometimes they would give bulk pricing, so I'm curious if we, if they would work with us at all, probably not, doesn't sound like it. Because that, it is, it is a hefty hosting price, it's, it's shocking. But yeah, you know, I think it's, it is what it is, it doesn't seem like there's any better options, but if you have any comments, you know.
Through you, Council President, I will say that STL is fundamental, not just in Summit, but in a lot of municipalities, because the bulk of all zoning permitting, UCC permitting, engineering, stormwater, drainage grading, all of those matters are saved in their databases. And we do recognize that is, it is an expensive service to use, but at least from my time working with the Division of Land Use, we've made tremendous improvements, now getting, for example, digital zoning COs out, making the process simpler, and it's the tool we have now, it's the tool that works, and we're gonna be working to keep improving with it. So thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving right along, oh, motion carries. Capital Projects, number seven, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution 12250, authorizing the execution of memorandum of understanding with Rutgers University for Climate Change Related Hazard Vulnerability Assessment Services. Whereas the Director of Engineering and Public Works Director has advised that this will be required as part of the city's land use element during the upcoming reexamination of the master plan. Rutgers University is conducting a pilot program to assist a select number of municipalities with the preparation of this at no cost to the participating municipalities, therefore, thereby, providing the city with free technical services and valuable insight to the process. So I would like to move this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, Council, Councilman Palowski.
What kind of free advice do they give us? Yeah, and I can just get more specific, like, can they convince people in this town, it's time to put solar up on some of our buildings, maybe on top of the tier garage?
Well, it's through you, Council President, I mean, they'll just be preparing an element of the, the master plan, so, I mean, obviously, if it's done well, and it's, it might inspire people to do so, but yeah, it's something otherwise we'd be paying a consultant to do. Likely our planner, and even our planners, say this is essentially a no-brainer, because it's essentially something they're doing for free. And this group at Rutgers is doing this all over the state, so they're, you know, I'd call them the experts in it, just because that's what they're immersed in, so. But, but that will include items such as, as that, so yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hamlet.
My only other comment, you don't have to answer me now, but there are a lot of deadlines in this, and I think from a planning board perspective, it's really important to keep council informed and the planning board, for example, there's a lot of deadlines in here, just giving you an example, April of '26, stakeholder resident survey closes. Like, I just want to understand and make sure that all of that is going back to Jenny, and that if we're doing surveys and things, we have to make sure that this is all encompassing of the entire government, not just the Environmental Commission, while I'm sure it's well-intended, and we're doing a great job, there has to be some more buy-in from residents. I mean, the first time I saw this was literally four days ago, and it's a lot to take. So I would say, although the services are free, if this starts to burden our staff, and isn't something that's consistent with what the planning board may be looking at the master plan, then we should certainly take pause, and I would just encourage you to make sure, I'm sure it could be totally fine, and we need it, but if it's starting to create undue burden to the staff, then, you know, we should have those conversations, I would think.
Thank you. Other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Capital Projects, number nine, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is 12253, authorizing the execution of a memorandum of under, agreement between the NJDOT and the City of Summit. of under agreement between the NJDOT and the City of Summit for New Jersey Commercial Drivers License Training Services Program. Superintendent of Public Works advises that many of the vehicles and equipment in the DPW require a valid commercial drivers license, CDL, to operate. And in an effort to reduce CDL renewal costs for DPW staff and the city, the superintendent recommends the execution of an MOA with New Jersey Department of Transportation, which will provide CDL training to DPW staff at a reduced cost. I would like to move this resolution.
Second, comments from the public? Comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, moving along to Capital Projects number nine, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Sorry, just need a breather for a second, because I'm going into my closed session packet. Okay, so we are at, it's the NW page. Yep. Okay. I'm on it, sorry. Okay. Here we go. Okay, so this is Resolution as discussed in closed session, 12277, authorizing redevelopment consulting services for NW Financial Group not to exceed $40,000. The City of Summit has a need to acquire special-
No, no, you skipped number nine.
Yeah.
You're in number nine, you're doing 10.
Oh, Harmon Holdings.
Yeah.
Okay, can we just go with this one or not?
No, let's do it in order, so people following at home can understand.
Sorry. Let me go back. Do you have it pulled up? Can I just have yours? It's before that one. It's right before 1277? Yeah. It's 12210.
Here, here.
Sorry. Okay, all right. This is 12210, authorizing execution of the Affordable Housing Agreement between the City of Summit and Broad Morris Rentals LLC and Harmon Holdings LLC. Whereas pursuant to the March 2024 amendments to the Fair Housing Act, the City of Summit filed a declaratory judgment action on June 22, 2025, with the Affordable Housing Dispute Resolution Program. And the city was required to prepare and adopt a fourth-round housing element and fair share plan, which the city adopted with the planning board on June 23, 2025, endorsed with the common council on June 24, 2025, and submitted to the program for review on June 25, 2025. Whereas Broad Morris Rentals LLC and Harmon Holdings LLC collectively own block 4008, lots 8, 9, and 11, erring after the property, and intend to develop a mixed-use inclusionary project on the property. The proposed project consists of 20 residential units, which will contain, consist of 16 market-rate units for credit-worthy affordable housing, family rental units, which is a 20% set aside, and a maximum of 5,000 square foot of ground commercial space, a maximum total of 5,000 square foot of basement storage associated with the commercial use and/or the residential use. May, sorry. In conjunction with ongoing efforts to satisfy the obligations of the FHA and the judicial requirements of the Mount Laurel Doctrine, city has deemed it appropriate to take certain actions in support of the project, and I would like to move this resolution.
Second. Thank you. Comments from the public? All right, comments from council? Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. I just would like to remind the public that this particular project is written into our round four plan. It's filed with the Affordable Housing Dispute Resolution Program. This means that we have represented to the state and to the courts that this project is a part of our strategy. So failing to sign this agreement now would essentially say that we adopted this plan, but we're not actually going to implement it. That creates both a credibility problem and a compliance problem for the city. So second, not approving this plan has legal repercussions and some practical consequences. So if we walk away from this, Harmon Holdings can come back and say that you did not act in good faith, and we're going to go to mediation, and we're going to ask for a bigger project there, and make more money and different things. And I think the city would be in more of a, have more of an issue there. So I think that signing this right now is something, or agreeing to this right now, is something that we need to do. It's our round four obligation, and anything outside of that is negligible. So thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilwoman Hamlet.
Just for, to remind the public, this was initially going to be a 33-unit, all-residential building, and most of it could have been built as of right. So this council, all seven of us, while we were deliberating, which now I'm allowed to say, was 100% unanimous on supporting this project. So it was disappointing to see some pushback when we actually made the project, we were able to make it a lot better. So we were able to turn it into a 20-unit development with retail on the bottom, and then there would be a showroom underneath that. So essentially, really reducing the traffic impact, because with 33 units, as our planner testified to multiple times, there would have been more traffic. And just so that everybody knows, the rendering that has been sent around to 22,000 houses was not the correct rendering. We actually don't have that yet. They haven't produced that. So hopefully, the new council will show the appropriate rendering when that comes.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to say that this was included in our affordable housing plan, because the other projects that were rejected were 10 times the size. This was literally the smallest project that we put in our plan. And, you know, going through the negotiations, as Councilwoman Hamlet mentioned, when you work with them initially, and they're reasonable, and we're reasonable, we're able to go from 33 units to 20 units. We're also able to have them negotiate retail on the bottom. We're also able to negotiate a setback, so that there's some space between the sidewalk and the building. I think, Auguste, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if you go down there now, there is no setback currently.
No, there wouldn't be. And as everything is still pending, there's been tremendous communication from our affordable housing attorney and our planner with Harmon Holdings and Broad Morris Rentals LLC. It's been a constant back and forth. So getting to this agreement's a huge benefit to the city and to them. I personally just look forward to having this done and resolved.
You know, with having these affordable housing rounds, going, closing number three and starting number four, we do have an obligation. And I would challenge anyone to tell, to show me anywhere in Summit where it's not overdeveloped, where it's not going to create traffic, where it's not going to affect our schools. If we have to build affordable housing units, we have to work with developers. And what we need to do, and I'm going to challenge the new council, to keep fighting for those smaller developments, just like we did for our round four. You know, this is something that we have to do. We have no more land. You know, we're, you know, it's hard enough fighting for field space for our youth, you know, you know, let alone more affordable housing and developments. So I would, again, I would challenge anyone in Summit to tell me where it's, wherever you put a development, it's going to be overcrowded. We're putting more people into our town, more cars, more children for our schools, and it's something that we need to fight as a council, as residents, to make sure that we're doing it responsibly. If it's a requirement, that's something that we have to do, but we can still do it responsibly. So, without, thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Other comments?
Yeah, I would just reiterate, you know what, actually, Harmon Holdings was very reasonable to deal with. They understood what, where the city was around all this, and we had a very good constructive dialogue, and I think we got to a pretty good place with this particular development. The reality is, it kind of conforms with the existing zoning already, with a tweak or two, but very, very minimal tweaks. So we had a good agreement. I agree, this is part of our process for round four. I don't think anyone is against development per se, as long as it's consistent with the character of our city. And we understand, like, we also want to promote affordable housing as well, within the guidelines of, you know, not changing, you know, blowing up the character of our town. And I think this particular development fits both of those criteria. So I am supportive of this as well. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we're on to Capital Projects number 10, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Okay. Three more to go. Thank you, Council President. 12277, authorizing the redevelopment consulting services for NW Financial Group not to exceed $40,000. Whereas the City of Summit has a need to acquire specialized redevelopment consulting services for two economic feasibility studies in connection with pending litigation for the fourth round of affordable housing as a non-fair and open contract. Whereas the anticipated term of this contract is upon project completion of two-site-specific feasibility studies through the remainder of 2025. Whereas Northwest Group has submitted a proposal upon request for these services, I would like to move this resolution.
Second, comments from the public? Comments from council?
Yeah.
Council President?
Yes, please. I think you'll probably, you'll probably say it, how important this is. You know, when you have developers come in and say that, you know, hey, we need to build here, and we're not exceeding our profitability, how do you, how do you fight that, right? Like, how do you, what's your counter to that, right? I think this is important for us to actually hire someone to go out there and give us the information that we need so that we can make, you know, a vital and good decision. So I'll just say that, but you'll probably speak a little more about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council?
Yeah, I would just say, as Councilman Boyer pointed out, this, with the process that has been created by the legislature, you know, developers do this for a living. They have their numbers, et cetera. They make all these statements about what's feasible, what's not feasible. And unless you're investing in professionals who can give you information, I mean, no one up here, to my knowledge, is a developer. So we need to have some people who can put some real numbers on this, so we can have a negotiation. And this is all about having a negotiation. But yet again, this is another check that taxpayers need to write, because the system that is in place is, I'm going to say it, it's ridiculous. It's, you know, I, I don't know how you make this up, but they made it up. And yet, this is another thing. So this is necessary, kind of have to do it. And I'm hoping that the numbers, they will help us defend the city's position. So, I am in favor. Councilwoman Hamlet.
Yeah, this was, I spent a lot of time talking to Augusto about this today, but this is actually really helpful, not only for the taxpayer, but for elected officials, because it gives you a tool. As Mike said, none of us are developers. Municipalities don't have to allow more density because of what's called a windfall. So if a developer's getting a windfall, right, which is profits that exceed X amount, we are allowed to challenge that. We are allowed to say that you don't deserve a windfall. It flies in the face of Mount Laurel. And when you look at the numbers and the different scenarios, it's very eye-opening. And you can have a very, very intelligent and unbiased, objective conversation with your colleagues, and you can really determine what a windfall is. It's very, this is probably the best money we've spent. They are super professional, super helpful. I just want to thank them for all their time this week and last week. It's been an eye-opener for me. And Claire, I'm going to follow up with you and just sort of let you know what I've come up with over the last couple of days, and make sure you guys are set up for success in '26.
Thank you. Other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Capital Projects number 11, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Okay, I'm coming. Sorry. Sorry. Okay, we are at, this session is, okay, yep. Okay, this is.
Reapoint.
I know. Resolution's not matching up on my, this construction. Yeah, but in my memo, it's, oh, never mind. It's, but it's saying in this, Rosie, it's saying.
She doesn't say it here. It's saying, where's the 24151? Now, this is the old resolution that originally appointed him. So you want to go to the previous one. Which is not here, so.
It's okay. It's okay. I'll go with it.
It's important to note that he's achieved tenure with his reapportment.
Right. Okay. So this is Resolution 12252, which is to reappoint a construction official. This is for Ralph Maritato, to the position of construction official for the city. Ralph was initially appointed to the position in February of 2021 for a statutory term of four years, which expires at the end of this year. Per NJSA 52:27D-126, this additional appointment would grant him tenure. We've all had the privilege of working with Ralph. He's just phenomenal, true asset to the city, and I couldn't be more excited to introduce this resolution for approval.
Second. All right, comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, last, Capital Projects in Community Services, number 12, Councilwoman Hamlet.
This is Resolution 12239, which is declaring a vacancy in the Department of Community Services Uniform Construction Code Division, part-time plumbing mechanical inspector. I would like to move this resolution and declare the vacancy.
Second. All right, any member of the public wish to comment on this resolution? All right, comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, we're on to the consent agenda. At this time, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second. All right, would any member of the public like to comment on any item in the consent agenda at this time? Give me a second. No? Okay, members of council? Councilwoman Hamlet.
Just because I don't, I forget what this was, Director Schreger, can you just give the public for Dormus and Orchard Street, the improvements, just ballpark, you don't have to go into specifics?
Certainly through you, Council President. Two capital improvement projects that are on there, Orchard Street, just because some residents reached out, it's only the city-owned portion, which goes from essentially the cul-de-sac where it ends at the top down to Morris Avenue. So mostly milling and paving, sidewalk restoration, a little bit of drainage and sanitary sewer work. For Doremus, started predominantly as a sanitary sewer project, since there are some houses that weren't connected into a sewer line, so that's being addressed. But it gives us an opportunity to also look at the street itself, curbing, drainage, you know, nothing made, I mean, it's major construction, but it's not generally altering the state of the roads that exist there. But with Doremus, we are also able to get into Williams and Sayer Streets, so we'll take care of that neighborhood, those three streets as well, so.
Thank you.
But they should go out, should be early spring construction, assuming we get good bids.
Great, thank you. Other comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. At this time, we are on the public comment section of our meeting. Any member of the public would like to approach the dais with a public com, oh, and thank you for our city professionals for staying. Have a good evening, drive safe. If any member of the public who would like to approach the dais and make a public comment, please, I would ask you to state your name, your address, and please try and limit your comments to three minutes or less.
comments to three minutes or less.
My name's Anthony Lee. I am, my, my address is in East Hanover, New Jersey. Is that sufficient?
Yep, that's fine.
Thank you. Here today, so, so there is a state piece of legislation called the Immigrant Trust Act. Obviously, this is a town council meeting. I'm speaking about it here tonight because the, because it has been, having been stalled in the assembly, so Immigrant Rights Act, immigrant rights groups and advocates are asking local, local councils to make their, make resolutions, make resolutions pledging to do this, do the like. The Act would create clear policies to limit the amount of, the questions about immigration status when people are receiving public services, to be only those that would be absolutely necessary to receive those services, would keep that information, would keep that information from National Immigration Enforcement, ICE, Immigration Enforcement, and would require, and would require police, local police, to report on any collaboration they have with ICE. The point of this is to allow immigrants who are a part of our communities, we can have disagreements about how, about, about illegality, the processes of becoming a citizen, such and such, but they are a part of our communities. The, sorry, collecting my thoughts. And the point is that they can, that these people can access essential services like healthcare, education, without, without being afraid. And if you turn on the news for any given amount of time, there's plenty of reason to be afraid. People who are in the system legally, who are coming to their immigration appointments only to be trapped at the, at the, at the door of their appointments. Judges who try to warn, warn them about this, who themselves get, who themselves have been appreh, who themselves have been apprehended for trying to warn them that they're going to be cornered. People who are, people who are citizens being taken away by ICE. Also, I know I'm right about out of time, just want to add, Perthamboy and Raway City councils have adopted such resolutions. I would encourage you all to do the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. All right, other member of the public? Any other members of the public wish to comment?
Good evening, Council President, Mayor, Anonymous. Yeah, so I wasn't really going to come to the meetings anymore and stuff for a little bit. I was going to do it next year when there was a new transition of power, new council and whatnot. But I figured, you know, there's a lot of things I didn't get to mention over the last couple of meetings with all the other things that had happened and stuff. It kind of diverted my attention away from some of the other things or whatever. And I do want to put on the record, you know, some of the stuff that I've been dealing with in terms of, like, constant, like, harassment and, like, defamation and slander, you know, just somebody who comes to me, and I love these meetings, I love coming to these meetings, you know? Here in all the other towns that I go to, I enjoy this. I like a little bit of trash TV here and there, but this is generally what I enjoy doing. I like coming to these meetings. So, you know, I'm not even running, and it's amazing the amount of, like, attacking and harassment, you know, and this and that. People online calling me a sex offender. I got a death threat back in September. I got a death threat. Through the chair to Councilman Boyer, I got a death threat. Like, you know, so I want to put this on the record because I, I, I think a lot of you would be surprised if you'd realize the kind of attacks that I've dealt with, the kinds of harassment. And through the chair to Matt, I do like you, you are a good lawyer. It's okay, you can also, you know, disagree with people and be critics and still like them, you know, but I'm glad we made up. But yeah, it's absurd, it's, it's ridiculous. I'm somebody who comes to meetings and I speak my mind, and I have views, and I have firm beliefs and stuff, you know? Part of the reason why I come to meetings and how I got involved in this was, I've been wronged my whole life by people in authority positions, principals, teachers, parents, police officers, priests. I've never even told my family about this, but during a face-to-face confession with a priest when I was about 10 years old, he inappropriately was touching me as I'm given a confession, as I'm remaining vulnerable by people you're supposed to entrust. So yeah, so I take issues with people in authority positions, and I like to challenge unchecked power. I brought my Magic 8-Ball back. This is my virtual Magic 8-Ball, and this thing's great because it gives you the answers, you know, it's artificial intelligence, and you give it, you assign it a personality. This one's named Georgina, and I'm going to ask Georgina, and you got to shake it, just like the old one, what kind of a person would make remarks like this, would make death threats? What kind of a person would do something like that? Give it a shake.
This AI Magic 8-Ball can ensure you that the person making these remarks and death threats is categorized as a cowardly simp with no balls lacking love in their personal life.
All right, you got it. Thank you.
That's AI for you.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you for your comments. All right, other comments from the public? All right, seeing none, I'm going to wrap up public comment section. We're on now to council member comments and new business. Now's our chance.
Council President.
Yes, Councilman Boyer.
So the Summit Housing Authority will be hosting its Thanksgiving dinner for residents at Vita Gala this Saturday. Members of Pilgrim Church will be preparing the food and putting together festive items for everyone. I know that the residents there are really looking forward to it. I'm a big, I'm a big fan now. I'm hooked with, with the folks at Vita Gala, I got to tell you. But if you would like to support that effort, I know it's giving season, please consider donating to Pilgrim Church. Just want to let you know that. If that's something that you would like to do, you can always hit me up on Facebook, and I'll put you in touch with the right person. Secondly, just would like to say that it is that season, I'm a cybersecurity guy, it's that season when folks are getting a lot of emails because they want you to click on links and stuff like that, especially on Facebook and different things. Please be aware that there are a lot of fraudsters out there. If you get an email saying that somebody accessed your bank account, they probably didn't. Don't click on it, right? Like, you know, put MFA, multi-factor authentication with everything you got. If you have an iPhone, it's pretty cool because the face recognition is pretty good. So please be aware of the, of these things. The FBI has put out multiple different warnings about this, and a lot of people don't take it that serious, but these fraudsters, I'll call them because I'm a little older, they, they kind of, they're annoying, and they kind of ruin people's lives for a little bit, you know? So be careful, be on the lookout, and that's it. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Boyer. Other comments? Councilwoman Hamlet.
Just a two-second one. Happy belated birthday to Rosie. Just want to say thank you for, for everything. I've never met anybody who works harder for the city, and I just want to say thank you for everything. You put in more hours in two days than most people put in in 10. I've just never seen a work ethic like yours. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilman Pulowski.
Thank you. So some of you may know, we lost a longtime resident, friend, and huge contributor to the Summit community yesterday. Toby Wesson departed this world surrounded by his large and loving family. Mr. Wesson, as I've called him since the fifth grade, was instrumental in raising funds for renovations to St. Teresa's Church and Overlook Hospital. He pretty much started Summit Hockey, founding the club team at the high school in the 80s, which shortly thereafter became a very successful varsity program. The team's unsung hero award is called the Toby Wesson Award to this day. I, I could say more, but nothing I will say will do him justice, so I'll end by saying we'll miss you, Mr. Wesson, and the Hilltopper community is better for having known you.
Thank you for those comments. Other comments from council? Yeah, I'll just wrap up and say, I'm sorry that you've gone through that, Mr. Anonymous. You know, we talk about this a lot. We can dis, we should be able to disagree, and certainly, there is no room at all for, for violence at all in our political discourse. And I find it a little sad and gets me angry that people have to continue to reiterate that. It should go without saying. It should be just a non-starter, that no one would ever go there, but you have to continue to reinforce that, that there is no part. And that would just lead me, my segue to my next comment, you know, we've got Thanksgiving coming up. Thanksgiving is a time for family. Sit next to someone you disagree with. Have a conversation with them, okay? It's a good time, you know, to come through disagreements and such. And, and so I do want to just wish everyone out there a very wonderful Thanksgiving, be with your loved ones. We have a lot to be thankful for. We have a lot of things that we could do better, but we, being grateful is a, is a very good, positive mental health exercise, and I would encourage people to look on the bright side of things and what we have, and to give thanks for that. And next week is a perfect opportune time to do that. So that is my comments.
Thanks, Mike.
All right.
Council President.
Yes.
Since Matt said 9:50, I got 10 minutes to. I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.